Good evening. It is Monday, October 13th, 2025, and I'd like to call this regular school board meeting to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Superintendent, fellow board members, staff in the community. Thank you for being with us this evening. Moving on to item two, do we have any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, sir.
I do have one. The representation we've got is item 4.01. We typically approve after that's done. So if you guys are good with it, we're going to move that to discussion at item 11.04. All right.
Also, Chairman, we have an edit to item 10.03, Section 2, under human capital. It talks about the IB coordinator at Leesburg, and that should say Taverries. So if you approve that tonight, we'll make sure that that edit gets noted as well. Also, today, a revised HR personnel list and addendum was added to item 901, and a revised attached added to item 1006, and the board has been provided copies.
Perfect. Here are no other changes. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, September 22nd, 2025, the workshop, September 30th, 2025, and the executive session for collective bargaining, September 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Mr. Dodd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Representation, Taverries High School naming the Taverries High School football field to Dr. Dan Bogus Field. Mr. Felton, Marlene, either one?
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent. Yeah, we would like to just have a vote for this naming rights of Dr. Dan Bogus Field, even though the stadium is after, named after his father. We would just like that approved so that they could have a representation on the field at their next home game.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, perfect. Well, then, we'll take-
I'm into details. Forty, forty years of service, great individuals, dedicated countless hours and time back to the students, never charged us a dime. So that's the value that we'd like to appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take up that formal vote under the discussion items. All right, moving on. We do have some public input cards this evening. First up is Mr. Andrew Leroux. Can please state your name and address for the record? That one right there is perfect.
My name, my name is Andrew Leroux. I live at 22, 2236 Sandridge Circle in Eustis. So I wanted to address a couple of things. I would like you guys to enact policy to get rid of students that are chronically misbehave and disrupt a class. I have three kids at Umatilla, and this has been kind of, there are just some things that just, from what I'm hearing, is there's just some things going on that habitually, students who habitually disrupt and, and they're completely disruptive to class need to be permanently expelled. If you guys want to have an environment that is conducive to learning, you gotta, the teacher has to be able to drive and be in control and can't be wasting time dealing with discipline problems. So students that continually disrupt class need to be dealt with, and you gotta get rid of them. There's a right to education, but with rights come responsibility. As an American, I can get a gun because I'm an American, and that's my constitutional right. But I have responsibility if I'm going to have guns. I have the right to drive down the road, but I have to be responsible. If you want to go to school, because that's your right, go to school. That's your right. But you have to be responsible enough to not be disruptive to the educational process. The next thing I wanted to talk about was math. I work in bridge engineering, and I'm seeing some of the stuff that my kids are giving me of how they solve things like 63 plus 25, or just kind of elementary type stuff. He's in first grade. This is crazy. Like, math is hard, and it's technical enough. It needs to follow, it needs to be made as simple as possible for the students to understand. Singapore math is good, and I don't really understand why we're talking about all this crazy vocabulary in math. They should just teach us, they should just teach math how it was taught back in the day when I was in third grade in the mid-'90s. It's not that difficult. Well, it's difficult, but it doesn't need to be made overly complicated. And the last comment that I wanted to make, I think that parents having to show IDs to get into schools is stupid. I'm not su, I don't really have enough information to really know the background behind this story. But I think that you guys should probably review that policy and remove that policy. And that's all I have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Leroux. Next up is Mr. Dan Lackey.
My name is Dan Lackey. I live at 305 Floral Avenue, Eustis, Florida. This is the third time I've tried to come in here. Hopefully, this is going to be the last time I have to come in here. I am a school bus driver. My responsibility as a school bus driver is to get those kids from home to school safely, and then from school to home safely. Now, I'm going to ask, you don't have to answer me, but I'm still going to ask, are they still using the same referral punishment system that they've used in the past at least two years? If you don't respond, that's fine, but from what I've been led to believe, it's true. The history of me, I've been driving the same route for three years. I've been driving for 10 or 11. And I, two years ago, had an issue with two sisters. I wrote them up 16 times that year, begging for the administrative to do something. Out of those 16 times, they're both sisters, they got kicked off the bus one day. The reason that I was given by the AP is that they can't kick them off longer than that because the parent, it's a hardship for the parent. Well, I got to tell you this. Those kids on a bus, when they disrupt the bus and get the attention of the bus driver off that road for how long, and that could come out to an accident, what is something that you'll kick a bus off, kick a kid off the bus for the full year? If he's a fighter, and he, you feel like he is dangerous to himself or other kids. Is that not correct? Yes. If you don't think it's not a danger for children disrupting the bus, and there's no way that the system's working now. I turn a referral into the school, and the person that decides what that child get is the principal. The principal does not go by, from what I've been told, it does not go by a formal guide, that when they do A, they're supposed to get B. Last year, I had the same two girls on my bus for most of the year. I wrote them up 18 times. That's when I started coming in here. This is the second time I've talked in front of you guys. The one time I didn't because I was able to hopefully get it resolved, but it didn't do it the first time I came in outside of here. But when a, the principal is the one that's responsible for that child's permission to continue to go to school or not, they're looking at the dollars and cents, not the safety of those kids. Now, those two children got, finally got kicked off my bus. What did they do? They take a full school bus all the way home and back, and they live in Astro. They go to school in Umatilla. But look at the miles that on a full school bus for two kids. What a waste of time. Get those parents to take responsibility of their children. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Next up, Ms. Bobby Blagio.
Hi, I'm Bobby Blagio, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Elizabeth Emery, President of Lake County Education Association, and Jessica Swicki, LCA Vice President, who send their regrets for not being able to attend this evening. Thank you for the collaboration and agreement on the Teacher Salary Increase Allocation TISA Funds. Due to changes in state policy, TISA funds could have been used to address the insurance fund deficit. We appreciate the board's recognition of the importance of using these funds to support compensation for Lake County schools educators. This is a meaningful step. We urge the board to continue demonstrating its commitment to our exceptional educators by going beyond the state's allocation. A deeper investment in our educators is a direct investment in the future of our students in our community. At the 2025 legislative, oh, as, sorry, can't read. As the 2025 legislative session begins, we urge you to continue advocating for increased state funding and for those funds to follow the student. We recognize the challenges and concerns that come with this kind of advocacy, but if we do not speak up together for sustained investment in our public schools, we risk undermining the quality of education and the success of our students. LCS simply cannot afford to continue operating with multimillion-dollar deficits. Our students, educators, and community deserve better. Lake County's educators show up every single day, giving their time, their energy, and their hearts, often at the expense of their own families. They deserve a community and a district that stands up for them just as fiercely as they stand up for their students. We are calling on our school board, our LCS leadership, and our community to stand with us in this advocacy, to prioritize our educators, invest in their future, and ensure they receive the support and recognition they so deeply deserve. When we invest in our public schools through our educators, we invest in the future of Lake County. And when we stand together united in one purpose, we can accomplish great things. On behalf of Elizabeth, Jessica, and every educator across Lake County, thank you for standing with us, for listening, and for having the courage to fight for our future.
Thank you, Ms. Blagio. And last card this evening is Mr. Edward Cohen.
Good evening, Board.
Chairman. My concern is, I need to know what the policy is on the assistance for
the bus drivers on the school buses in dealing with children. I understand there's irate children, things, children doing things that they shouldn't be, but I also come to realize there's a way to handle this, and it does not include, as far as I'm concerned, physical, touching, or verbal abuse. I am trying to find out what the board's policy, or the county, what the policy is reference to attendance touching physically children and verbally abusing them. Secondly, I'd like to know who, or what are the actions that can be taken for this person that's doing the thing they shouldn't be doing? And thirdly, who is responsible for taking care of these actions? Because I personally had gone to the school and spoke to assistant principal last year because of verbal abuse to my grandson, and it got absolutely no results. I understand this Mr. Lackey here. I know him from driving the bus that my grandson rides on. And I just don't believe that there's any need or any legal reason for a person to touch a child. That's pretty much what I have to say. And I'd just like to know where the board stands on this, and what I need to do, or any other person needs to do, to stop this kind of behavior from an attendance that's on the bus to help control children. I do understand there are methods to deal with irate children. But like I said before, I do not believe verbal abuse or putting hands on is in any of these policies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. We've got your contact information, and somebody will certainly get with you to get answers to those questions. All right.
We have your contact information.
Yep, all good. All right, moving on to reports this evening. Item 6.01, the Education Foundation Report. Dr. Johnson?
Good evening, Superintendent, School Board Chairman, and School Board Members. We are officially out at the Lady of the Lakes Renaissance Fair Site, starting to set up for this year's event. We are three weeks away from our opening day, and this event would not be possible without our volunteers, and we are continuing to recruit volunteers. Whether it be helping at lemonade stands, check-in, or welcoming guests, there's something for everyone. Our cast will be on-site for the next two Saturdays, and we are looking forward to getting started with that event, November 1st, 2nd, 7th through the 9th, and November 7th is our education day. Also, for awareness, we have submitted an official request to remain on the Taverries site for 2026 to the Board of County Commissioners. The past few weeks, I have started visiting with a number of area schools principals, and it has been great to see the campuses and learning about each of the schools. It's also been really valuable to hear about their experience with the Education Foundation, and being able to see and hear what the teachers have to say about the resources like teacher grants and our Apple Mart. Speaking of Apple Mart, we are at 388 teacher visits for this school year. That estimates to be about $60,140 worth of school supplies. Our two most visited locations continue to be Leesburg and Mascot. Take Stock and Children took a group of 45 Lake County students to visit USF on October 1st. This was a great opportunity for them to tour the campus, being able to learn more about that being an option for them after high school when they can use their Take Stock and Children scholarship. This Wednesday, October 15th, Take Stock and Children will be hosting a career speed dating event, which is sponsored by Insight Credit Union, where the students will be able to interact and learn from a number of business partners across the community. This past Friday, the 22nd Annual Scott Strong Memorial Golf Tournament was at Harbor Hills. This event was sold out, and we brought in more than $105,000, surpassing our budget by $20,000. We are finalizing our expenses, but we anticipate having raised more than $80,000 for Lake County schools, teachers, students, and scholarships. Thank you to a number of you who attended and volunteered. We have received school nominations for Teacher of the Year, School Related Employee of the Year, and Rookie Teacher of the Year. We have secured judges, and they have started reviewing those applications. We are excited to host our celebration, Inspired by Excellence, on January 29th at the Clearmont Performing Arts Center. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Great work. Dr. Johnson, thank you. 6.02 Attorney Report. Mr. Cole, no report? All right. We also don't have any unfinished business this evening, so moving on to the consent agenda. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval of consent agenda items 8.01 to 10.06.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Dr. Luke. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. All right, moving on to discussion this evening. Item 11.01, Public Hearing, Tentative Approval of Policies. Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir. At this time, we're going to open the meeting to a public hearing for tentative approval of policies 0131, that's Legislative Policymaking, 0131.1, Technical Corrections, and 8330, Student Records. At this time, is there any public input on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend tentative approval of the policies presented.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Dr. Luke. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Item 11.02, Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir. The item before the board is a travel request by Tyler Brandenburg, School Board Member, District 2, to attend the FSBA Annual Joint Conference, to be held on December 2nd through 5th, 2025, at the Grand High at Tampa Bay. By Florida statute, the public must have an opportunity to speak on the specific travel agenda item. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. The public comment period is closed.
This one is a board recommendation, so does anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion that we approve item 11.02.
Thank you, Dr. Luke. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for that loud second, Mr. Dodd.
Somehow, I don't know how it missed the microphone.
Got a motion by Dr. Luke, a second by Mr. Dodd. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Item 11.03, same thing. Mr. Cole?
Yes, sir. The item again is a travel request, this time for Molly Cunningham, School Board Member, District 4, to attend the FSBA Annual Joint Conference, December 2 to 5, 2025, at the Grand High at Tampa Bay. Per statute, the public must have an opportunity to speak on this specific travel agenda. Is there any public comment? A public comment period is closed.
All right.
I make a motion that we approve 11.03.
Second. Got a motion by Dr. Luke, a second by Mr. Dodd. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. And lastly, item 11.04 is just the official approval of the naming change at Taverries High School football field to Dr. Dan Bogus Field. So do we have a motion on that item?
I'll make a motion that we rename the field to the Dan Bogus Field.
Field. Perfect. All right, got a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Dr. Luke. Any further discussion?
I will say, I, that, that man has been doing physicals in that space. I mean, I went to high school there, and we won't talk about how long ago that was, but he was doing them then. So I think it's completely appropriate to acknowledge all the contributions he made. So, big impact.
Agreed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Superintendent, your report this evening.
Unfortunately, I actually have a long list of letters of condolence that were sent. I'm apologize in advance for some of the names that are on this list at this, there. Although Ms. Challenger has written them out phonetically, I apologize if I mispronounce any of these names. First of all, our former custodian at Eustis Middle School, Maxie Monroe Senior, a letter was sent to her family. Also, Eugene Joseph, or Mike Graham Senior, father of Eugene Joey Graham, in our Health and Safety Officer, Risk Management, and the father-in-law of Amy Grant Graham, Fiscal Assistant in Maintenance. Faz Hassan, father of Fariana Afroz, Afroz, Fiscal Assistant in Federal Programs, condolences to her family. Juan Zavala, husband of Brenda Nogwaya, is a bookkeeper in college and career readiness. Albert Cruden, father of Shelley Benner, Manager in Cost Reporting, FTE and Finance. Shirley Annette Covington, mother of Anna Oliphant, Teen Parent Teacher, enjoys an alternative education. And Richard Thiler, a retired science teacher at South Lake High School, condolences were sent to his family as well. So that concludes all of our letters of condolence that were sent. Just a few highlights. First of all, we have Bullying Prevention Month. You approved the resolution at the last meeting. It's coming up, Bullying Prevention Day is celebrated on Wednesday, October 22nd, which is Unity Day, Unity Day. So be sure and wear your orange that day. Also, just wanted to acknowledge Scott Ward, thinking about Ms. Bobby and her comments. He did go and speak on our behalf. He was one of three CFOs in the state of Florida that went and served on a panel for the House K-12 Appropriations Committee and did a very nice job talking about the impacts of the loss of funding that we've incurred, mainly related to the scholarships in the '23-'24 school year. They'll be taking up the issues with '24-'25 at the next meeting. But they asked him, what, what was the funding loss? And he told him it was the $16 million. And then they asked, what does that equate to? And he said, a raise for our teachers. And so, just putting that out there and really stressing the fact that these were dollars that could have, could have really been used significantly to, to help all of our employees. And so I want to thank him for that. He did a great job. I was always nervous going up and speaking to the legislature, and he did a great job. And also, I want to thank Mr. Farnsworth, and also Stacia Warner from Taverries Elementary, and Brent Frazier from Umatilla High School. They joined me last week, and we presented to Leadership Florida, a group of about 50 educators from across the state who came, and they were representatives of all different walks of education and had a great time just highlighting the great things happening in our schools here. So it was always a proud day and a good day to, to be in Lake. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board, no more comments. Dr. Luke?
I wanted to acknowledge the PD Day that we had for teachers assistance, some paraprofessionals today. I know that the CIA team and Dr. Scott and Dr. Felton, or Mr. Felton, or you guys represented well there. I know there was lots of, I walked around for the first session in the morning, and there was lots of great things happening. And it's, I think that Dr. Felton recognized in her statement in the morning that, in all the districts that she's been around during her consultant work, that she hasn't found another district that gives a day to teachers' assistance and putting into their learning. And so, I love that we do that. I think that's really important for them to be able to support classroom teachers. And I know it takes a lot of work. There's a lot of events and things that take place. And so I appreciate all the work that your group did with that. I also wanted to give a huge shout out to Kiana, and, well, I guess I should say Mr. Zamora's team, and Kiana, and Jamie, and Justine, and Kate. And they came into the room this afternoon with our seniors. And I have to tell you that they were super excited to have a full room of graduates in May that will be potential teachers in Lake and Sutter County. But the environment that they bring to the table and the way that they represent Lake County just speaks to one of those proud moments, that there was laughter and fun, and at the end, they were like, we're here. This is our email. And the email, what I want to teach in Lake, it was a cute email or whatever it was. But anyway, my students just, they had questions. They were engaged. It was a great day. And Mr. Locuston, Dr. King, and Mrs. Moses came out to do a principal panel and received questions from the students about teaching and what to expect, and lots of really good questions. And it was, it was just a good time. We had a real, there was lots of laughing, which in education spaces, sometimes I feel like we don't get to see that as much. And it was just, the whole afternoon was wonderful and positive. And it's because of the work of Mr. Zamora's team. So I really appreciate that as well. And then, I also wanted to thank Mrs. Strawn. I have gotten more communication the last two weeks about the environment that you're creating at Eustis Heights, you and your team. And I am really appreciative of the work and the sense of urgency and what you're doing for kids. And so, that's all I have. Oh, I wanted to say thank you for acknowledging that the TISA went to compensation. That was a huge deal. So thank you for that and your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Luke. Mr. Dodd?
Well, piggybacking on the world of professional development, I got a chance to, to experience it myself, and shout out to the CIA team for, for doing this and, and doing it so well. But I had a chance to step into the Teach Live and interact with an avatar completing the Clinical Education Certification. And I'll tell you, I felt like it was more nerve-wracking to talk to a cartoon on the screen than it was to talk to a real person. But I thought the experience was, was really just top-notch, and the chance to actually simulate and, and go through a real-world sort of situations and what this would look like. And CIA team, great job in putting that together. And looked like we had a lot of people going there. So it looks like a lot of, a lot of folks ready to go out and, and mentor teachers in some capacity, or coach, coach others. Also, just thinking about professional development, it almost always seems like one of the norms when I attend those sessions is that what is learned here leaves here, right? And I love that mantra. Thinking about a couple of you going off to the FSBA conference, I know a number of years ago, some of us made the decision to not continue there, and thinking about the lack of advocacy that FSBA was, was doing for us. And so I'd, I'd be interested in hearing more about if any of that has changed, what benefits Lake County, what they're doing in terms of acknowledging the benefits of public school overall and creating that image across the state. And so, anyway, that's one of my wonderings, is y'all go off to the conference and just, just to learn a little more about what they're doing. And hopefully, some of that is benefiting us here in Lake too.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Mr. Mathias?
So I genuinely appreciate your words and speaking about how dedicated this board is. I had one of those aha moments. And if any of you have been around very long, you've seen how there's been more of a push towards charter schools, public charters, private charters. And it dawned on me, because there's some recent legislation that is absolutely ridiculous, where a charter can co-inhabit, co-inhabit the same spaces of public school. And I was speaking to the area director for a charter school that is really a good partner with us, which is Pinecrest. They really are. And it was an aha moment as we're speaking, because he's going, this is really dumb, that other legislation we were talking about. And it dawned on me, they're directly impacted by how much we receive. Keep in mind, we're 65th out of 67 counties in per-student funding. And he, he reacted that, yes, he gets the same funding dollars. And I said, well, how about charter schools advocate with us? So their president, I'm going to meet him, he's flying through the Orlando Airport, I'm going to drive down and, and hopefully gain his advocacy, because that seems to be what the legislature listens to. And that's one more partner in this entire quest for us just to be, just fairness. Because again, if we were just at state average, that's $12 million a year that we would have the ability to give to our teachers that deserve it, our service workers that deserve it. And so, we, we will continue to work, maybe sometimes behind the scenes, just so you know. But please know where our heart is, and that's with you guys. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mathias. And yeah, that same line of thinking, as Bobby mentioned in her comments as well, the TSA dollars could have gone towards the insurance fund, and I'm certainly glad they did not. But as Bobby knows and the rest of the folks that serve on the Joint Insurance Advisory Committee, we continue to have struggles there in making that plan whole without a Committee, we continue to have struggles there in making that plan whole, without affecting the benefits that go to our staff. And in that line of thinking, at our Insurance Advisory Committee meeting last Monday, the committee made a big stride forward on a new clinic model moving forward as the current model runs out, which was the brainchild of Mr. Oyer, and this happens to, I believe, be his last board meeting with us, so I want to publicly thank Rob for what he's done over the last three or four years he's been in that role. His tagline is he likes to solve unsolvable problems, and he has not solved this one, but put a massive dent in it and got far more creative than anybody else would, instead of just saying, we need to raise premiums, we need to cut copays, or we need to raise copays, we need to raise deductibles, we need to cut coverage. He is finding every creative way we can to still deliver a benefit to our employees that they can be proud of and not raise the cost of doing so. So Rob, thank you for what you've done for us, and I know you'll still be with us on the sideline in your new adventures moving forward, but I just appreciate you and wanted you to know that. Any other comments this evening?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.